Welcome, welcome to our October 16th Board of Supervisors meeting. And I do want to thank y'all for coming, taking part in our county government. I'm gonna do something I started on the last board meeting. I want to introduce these guys that are on the board and then our staff. I can't introduce all the staff because we'd be here all day. But Brad Calhoun, Jared Morrison, I'm Steve Gaines, and the two guys that sat beside me, Daniel Cross and Jay Bishop. I haven't heard, they may have illness or something, but they very well could be here in a minute because we're starting right at nine o'clock. I'm gonna call the meeting to order, and Craig, would you pray for us?
Yes, sir. Father, your word tells us to trust in you with all of our heart, to not lean on our own understanding if we acknowledge you in all of our life and all of our ways. You will make our paths straight. You'll help to direct us in the way we should go. So, Father, that's our prayer this morning. We want that to be our guide. Father, these men need wisdom to know what exactly is the path that we are going. And so, Fathers of people, we entrust them with that responsibility, and you have put them in the place of service that you had put them in, and that is all by work of your hand, and we trust you with that ultimately. And so, Father, I pray today as we think about what's in the best interest of all of our citizens, that we'll use the wisdom that you give to us freely and we'll make good and wise decisions. Help us to please you in all that we do in Christ's name.
Amen. All right, under public comments, I have a verse on here, "Residents of Reservoir East." Is anybody here? Do you have a spokesman, or do you want... If each one want to speak, limit it to about three minutes and try not duplicate what the other one says, okay? Who's first?
First.
Just give us your name and address, which I think you've already signed in.
My name is Rex Cunningham. I live in the Reservoir East subdivision.
Yes, sir.
I've lived there since '02, and I'm very troubled with the way that community is going. It is falling apart at the seams. Many bikes, go-karts, you name it, stop signs, speeding, not to even count the blight. We used to get a drive-through every now and then from the Sheriff's Department. They'd come through and kind of slow things down. Haven't seen that in years. I'd like to see that come back. I think people do because we allow them to do, and that's what we've done. We've allowed that neighborhood to turn into almost a trailer park. And like I said, I've been there for 20 years. I hate to see it. I don't know how much longer I can keep and maintain my home, but I will until I can. But when I sell it, I don't want my property values to fall through the basement because that's where we're all headed. And we have been in contact with the codes people. We don't have HOA, everybody knows that. There's no way you're gonna get one in there, but there are codes that need to be enforced, and my wife is gonna speak about that. Thank you very much.
Mr. Cunningham, thank you. Our code people are here at the heads, and I have the same opinion that you do as far as the blight of that neighborhood. And it is a goal of mine to make all of my district appreciate in values and atmosphere. We are with you, and they are working several locations in there at y'all's request.
And I'm very much aware of that. You've helped me many times.
Yes.
And I support you, I vote for you, and I thank you.
Thank you.
I believe they do because we allow.
We're gonna continue on, and we'll do everything we can to bring that subdivision back to where it should be.
Thank you very much.
Keith, or Craig, would you say a few words about our water, floodwater program? That is my one project for this district.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. We have, by virtue of our distribution that came directly from the federal government in 2021, we received some, somewhere in the neighborhood of about $30 million through the American Rescue Plan Act. The board elected to use a small portion of that distribution for other purposes other than what I'm gonna talk about, but the vast majority of the funding received by the Board of Supervisors was dedicated to what is called our Rankin County Countywide Stormwater Management Program. And because of the funding and the way that the board decided to use the funding, we've been able to ramp up and move forward with plans and with some activities related to stormwater management. And I know this subdivision in particular has had some stormwater challenges by virtue of the way that it was developed and by virtue of the way that growth around it has increased and impacted stormwater. And so, this board has committed significant funding to try to address that across the county. Mr. Gaines, you have already identified, I think our engineers identified, the Reservoir East subdivision as a potential problem site in our stormwater management plan that would need to be addressed. And that site is one of about 30 across the entire county that has been defined as critical sites for immediate action to the extent that funding's available. So, you've already prioritized that area for treatment, for renovation, for rehab, for work, and now it's just a function of getting through our program, and eventually that critical site will come online and there'll be some work done.
I think we also have to have our legislature to help us maybe with a little bit of wording in the statute. Some of the ditches, drains in this neighborhood and many others are private property. They're owned by the landowners, and there is a state statute that does not allow us to do work on private property. So, this is something that's been worked through with our lawyers and people in Jackson. But anyhow, okay, next.
That's what I was gonna...
Come on, come on.
The flooding, we've got on the backside of Holmar, we've got some...
Give us your name and...
Caroline Cunningham.
Okay, I've got it.
Yeah, their backyards are flooding. The whole backside of that needs, the ditch needs to be, hasn't been cleaned out in quite some time, so...
Who does that belong to? I mean, if it's not...
It belongs to the county because each end of the cul-de-sac, and it backs up Holmar, there's no one that owns that, the end of the cul-de-sac. There's no way to build or anything.
Somebody's got to own it. I don't know if the county would own it.
The county does not own that. That's not the county's responsibility. This is what Mr. Gaines was indicating. That's private property. It either belongs to the original developer because it was a part of a planned extension of the development, or it belongs to another private property owner, or it belongs to the HOA. I'm told that the HOA doesn't exist, therefore it's gonna end up being responsibility of the property owners adjacent to it. There's no way to change that reality. Mr. Gaines, you mentioned it, and I want to stress this. This board recognizes that private property owners are generally speaking not in the best position to try to address things like stormwater management. That takes much more thought, effort, energy, planning, engineering than a private property owner is gonna have at their disposal, okay? And so, who else is going to address management of stormwater on private property other than a political entity, a government body? And so, this, you guys have said, "We don't have the legal authority to go on private property and use taxpayer money to address issues like stormwater." So, we need to figure out a way to get a political body that does have that authority. And that's gonna require us to go to the state legislature and ask them for their help in creating statutes that will allow us to have a political entity who can take responsibility for stormwater management in particular on private property. It's the only way we're gonna ever address this problem long-term. Rest of the time, what we're doing is, we're figuring out, has it gotten so bad? Has the situation gotten so bad that it is starting to put at risk public property?
Which is your road.
That's where you guys have the legal authority at that moment to step in. My road, my ditch, my infrastructure is at risk because of this particular issue on private property, and I need to go on private property, not because I'm gonna try to address the condition or improve private property, but because I'm gonna try to protect the public property. And until you get to that point, you guys do not have the legal authority to act. It'd be great if instead of having to come to you guys and wait or be told to wait until it gets bad enough, what if we just had an entity kind of like you guys, but different from you guys, who had the authority to go take care of it before it got to that point? And that's what we're trying to do. It's just gonna take time.
Does that hit? Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
We just got the attention of people in Washington and local in Jackson that we have a problem. We've been trying to get attention for a while, but we did, we have focus now from outside that I feel like they're gonna help us, and we'll see how we form an entity that will govern these monies, separate from any other monies that the county takes in.
We're getting federal dollars and state dollars to address this issue.
Thank you.
And I mean, we've just got to have a governing body to have it go forward.
So, how do we keep up with that? Do we just call you, Mr. Gaines?
You can.
Okay.
That'd probably be the easiest.
Okay.
Do you have his number?
Yes.
It's not something that'll happen fast, so I'll tell you. It's not gonna happen real fast.
I can give you Jay's also. No, call me. Just call me.
Yeah, we thank y'all for listening to us.
Yes, ma'am.
Because our property value is going down, and we want to stay there, but if, you know, we might just have to cut ties and go.
Let's try to keep the community and make it better.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Who's next?
Hi, I'm Sabrina Brewer. I live at 915 Bruce Ski Drive. Basically, they pretty much covered everything. I just want to say, like everybody else, we just want to live in a, say, clean neighborhood and everything, so.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Okay, do we have anyone else regarding this neighborhood? You probably know, I've been very sensitive about what goes on, even out on Hollybush because the traffic. I don't want to add to traffic problems. We don't want a truck stop that's coming in and out of Hollybush. We've turned it down and probably didn't make any friends by doing that. I've turned other things down in there.
We made one.
I made one mistake?
One friend.
Oh, I was gonna say, if I only made one mistake, I'll take it. All right, well, let's move on. Eric Hill?
Not the Reservoir East.
No, no, no.
We're moving on.
We're moving on.
I think you may be my neighbor.
How y'all doing? Good.
Doing fine.
All right, well, I live on Taylor Lane there, and...
Eric, is 264 Taylor Lane, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Eric Hill. We have to get that on the...
Oh, yeah, okay, yes, sir. And we were just, our neighbors getting, we were just trying to figure out, there's a sign up saying something about the zoning being changed.
Mr. President, this gentleman is here on the LaShay Greenwood Conditional Use Permit that's under my section under public hearings.
Okay, do you mind, we're covering that in depth in just a minute.
Okay, sure.
It's on here, we just hadn't gotten to it.
Okay.
Probably answered your question.
You have opportunity to come back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Marcus Vine?
They're gonna be the same.
Same thing, okay.
If anybody that wants to have a public comment that's not on the agenda.
There's, okay. No one else has a public comment? If it's regarding Taylor Lane, we'll cover that in a minute. Okay, thank you. All right, old business?
I make most approve.
Second.
All right, Jared makes a motion, Calhoun seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Motion passes.
Yes, sir.
Before we get to the consent agenda, I'd like to request that we pull item 1H and put it under additional business.
Item what?
1H, discuss it under additional business.
All right, I make a motion to approve consent agenda minus item 1H.
Second.
All right. Jay Bishop makes a motion to move Jay over to...
1H.
I mean, I'm sorry, I'm all shit wrong. 1H over from the consent agenda, and everything else approved. Calhoun second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion passes. All right, now consent agenda. That was, that covered it.
Yes.
All right, Ms. Caroline?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Here for the petition to change of assessment on 22 and 23 real property assessment rules.
Motion approved.
Second.
All right, Calhoun makes a motion, Morrison seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion passes. Mr. Sullivan?
Good morning.
Good morning. How y'all? All right.
Just one item, approve the authority for the tax assessor to contract for professional services with Lawrence Britton.
Motion approved.
All right, Mr. Bishop makes a motion, Morrison seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion passes.
Appreciate it.
All right, Wilts?
Well, this is a new one. Think about that. Welcome.
Please state your name.
My name is Mudd. Here today for authority for the county administrator to execute a statement of work agreement with Core Technology to perform a cybersecurity assessment on the county's networking resources.
Motion approved.
Second. Mr. Bishop makes a motion, Mr. Morrison seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion passes.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Harrison?
Good morning.
Morning.
We take A, B, and C, be Comcast permits. Actually, two of them's in District 1 and one's in District 4.
Make a motion, approve.
Second. All right, Mr. Calhoun makes a motion, Mr. Morrison seconds motion. Any other discussion? I have a question. Yes, sir. Harrison, and you may not know, this is in the rural area of Lawrence and Sandhill.
Yes, sir.
There's several little side roads that probably have as many homes as these two roads. Are they going down those side roads or is this just the major?
They're just trying to do the major roads right now, is what they're trying to do, Steve.
Well, that's...
But I'll talk to them and see.
Yeah, let's push and give them some encouragement because there's more houses on the quarter-mile roads than there are on the main.
And they may come back and pick those up after they do.
This might be more than main line, trunk line running down the road.
Steve, in some areas, I have seen them do that, just what he's saying, they go down that main one first, and they've come back and done the little, the side roads might be a mile long.
Yeah.
They have, and I'm not saying they are, but they have done that.
But I will talk to them.
All right. Go ahead. We, you want to take those three?
Three together, yes, sir.
I think we had a motion and a second already, Brad and Morrison, and there was any other discussion?
So, is there nothing we could do about putting them all underground? You know, the more we make them, allow them to go overhead, that's just more issues down the road. I guess you tie it on to all your power poles.
This one, right, that first one is a buried CA.
Comcast likes to bury a lot of their stuff, but they like to go overhead with a lot of their stuff. They like to hit the power poles, Jay, that's in the area.
In some places, it's probably tough to go underground.
Typically, I've noticed most of theirs, they like to join with the fire company on their poles for some reason.
See, some of those roads, they're no right of way at all, they have to be really out in the woods.
Oh, there, I got you.
You see, because it wooded all the way up to them.
I got you.
All right, all in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Motion passes for A, B, and C.
I got actually D, E, and F, which is Windstream, which they all are under District 1, Communication Fiber Optical Barriers.
Does this, does it say where?
Yes, sir. We got Mountain Creek Farms.
Oh, nevermind, okay, I got you. I didn't scroll down.
Poppin Springs.
Uh-huh, I got you.
They kind of catching a little, finishing up that leg, they didn't do.
No, I think that's good. I just, I didn't, I didn't scroll down enough, okay? I got you.
Motion approved.
Second.
All right, Mr. Bishop makes a motion to approve, Mr. Morrison seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion passes. Thank you. That was through F?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Falcone?
D, E, and F, yes, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Falcone.
Item A, Mr. President, is we recommend an approval of payout number one from Southeastern Pipeline Environmental Services for work on the UT Holcomb branch at Deer Valley subdivision. That's program element number 121 in your ARPA program in the amount of $125,637.50 and authority to issue that check.
Make most approve.
Mr. Morrison makes a motion, Calhoun seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion passes.
This ain't discussion, this is just inquiry. I know they pulled out of Deer Valley, I mean, completely.
Yeah, when the, when the, they had the issue with the water line, they stopped and they just, they've been tied up on it all, and they're coming back, they should be back hopefully this week.
And where'd they go to? No, they're not, they're not doing that one, I'm not.
I'm not sure which one they went to.
Right, that's right.
It was one of our projects.
Wasn't the same one, right.
Item B, Mr. President, we recommend approval of payout number three from Southeastern Pipeline Environmental Services for work performed on the Mill Creek stabilization project, which is program element number 205 in your ARPA program in the amount of $791,030.80 and authority to issue that check.
Motion approved.
Second. All right, Mr. Calhoun makes a motion, Mr. Morrison seconds. Any other discussion?
How much more time they like there?
They're hoping on, realistically, to be through by Thanksgiving.
Okay.
Hopefully sooner, but I think that's a conservative estimate, as long as the weather holds out.
All right, all in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item C, Mr. President, we recommend an approval of payout number four from Hippel Construction Company, Inc. for work performed on the Andrew Jackson Circle Improvement Project in the amount of $130,768.71 and authority to issue that check.
All right, have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second. Mr. Morrison makes a motion, Mr. Bishop seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion passes.
Item D, Mr. President, is on Freedom Farms. It should say Phase 4A. My apologies, that's my error, not Phase 4, it's Phase 4A. They broke Phase 4 up into two sections. We recommend an approval of the file plat and financial security in the amount of $199,125. And we're recommending this contingent, they've got some final certifications, they've got to get us on the water, and the engineer's final certification, and we don't have those yet, but we certainly feel like they're gonna come in in quick time and certainly before the next board meeting, so we recommend an approval contingent upon those things being furnished.
All right, do I have a motion?
Certainly.
I make a motion.
Jay makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Morrison seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Slay?
We can take all A, B, and C. I make a motion to set A, B, and C for November 2nd for a public hearing. Second.
All right, have a motion by Calhoun to set A, B, and C for November 2nd. Mr. Bishop seconded that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion passes.
Mr. President, item D is a public hearing on the LaShay Greenwood Conditional Use Permit at 263 Taylor Lane, it's a District 4 property. I'm gonna open that public hearing. Ms. Greenwood is seeking a conditional use permit for a business that she is operating out of a metal building at 263 Taylor Lane. She has a manufactured home and a 2,100-square-foot shop building that are on the property. Ms. Greenwood did not secure a building permit for the shop. This is a seven-acre parcel, property is owned A1. She sells a, she sells chemical-free cosmetic products, and she does that mostly online, if not exclusively. Products are shipped directly to the customer by the postal service. Hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. She has 12 employees that work Monday through Thursday, and then she has six employees that work on Friday. The county received a report through Waste Management that a business was being operated on this property based on the amount of garbage that was being placed for pickup at roadside. And so, the property has been posted and a notice of public hearing has been published. The Office of Community Development did not receive any calls, but I believe that there are people here today who would like to address the board or discuss this with the board, so at this time, that public hearing is open. This time, I will ask for anyone who has questions or is in opposition to Ms. Greenwood's Conditional Use Permit to please come forward at this time, state your name and address. And, Mr. President, just as a reminder, at some point, Ms. Greenwood will be given an opportunity as well to address the board before the board takes action.
All right. Come on, welcome back. This is Eric?
Eric Hill, yes, sir. 264 Taylor Lane. Not really in opposition or anything, we were just trying to get some clarity on the zoning, and we saw on the sign that it said the zoning may change and have to, and we just wondered if that's correct.
I think it's a zoning hearing, it's not conditional.
It's not a zoning change.
No, that's...
It's just that we place some conditions on what can happen there.
Okay.
But the zoning is gonna stay the same.
So, we, if you want to, if you, it'll remain residential based?
I think it's ag.
Yes.
Ag, which you can build a house on ag land, so it's, that's good, that's a good zoning, and I, you know, I'm very near, I would, I wouldn't change.
Okay, all right, we're just trying to get some clarity on that.
Yeah.
Thank y'all. Okay.
All right. Anyone else to speak concerning the matter? Anyone else?
Good morning. I'm LaShay Greenwood, 263 Taylor Lane. So, with the business being there, originally I obtained a permit, but it was for a smaller structure, and I didn't really pay attention to it. I turned it in, and they said that regardless, I guess for the size of my building, it's a 30 by 70, the specs were still the same. And so, I had an engineer come out and make sure that it was up to code with everything, so I think that's pretty much all I do need, but I was curious as to, I guess, what were the next steps. I know the dumpster was an issue, so I do have a dumpster that's being placed out there. They're supposed to come Wednesday and place the dumpster out.
Very good. Will, thank you, Ms. Greenwood. Appreciate that. So, we'll go over some of the conditions that the staff has come up with. Is there anyone else to speak on this matter?
Well, mine is just, of course, if any of you want to ask.
Okay, all right, let me go through our conditions, and that may address some of your concerns. Gentlemen, the staff has come up with a few conditions. Number one, I think number one's been addressed already, which is an on-site refuse container and pickup by private trash collector, so that sounds like that that has been handled. The second thing is, because the structure has been in place for some time unpermitted, we need, we need to at least consider a determination of the real and personal property avalorum that is owed to Rankin County for the value of the business and the business' personal property for, definitely for two tax years, '22 and '23. I don't know that the structure was there in '21, but if it was, there may be some impact there. As, as is our custom and practice and set forth in our building permit regulations, anytime... anytime an individual fails to secure a building permit before they construct a, a building like this, uh, we require a doubling of the permit fee that would be payable. And so we would propose that that would be a condition. There has to be a payment of double the permit fee that would be called for. And because this is a business, uh, Ms. Greenwood will need to apply for a privilege license through the tax collector's office. And so those are the, those would be the conditions that, that we would request. Ma'am, do you have any other questions that you want to ask? You need, you'll need to come forward if you, if you do.
Is this still pending?
Yes, ma'am. It's still pending.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. If, if you have something, though, that you want to address before the board makes its decision, you need to come on now and tell the board.
You want to discuss? We were looking online. My name is Mary Devine.
Yes, ma'am.
And I own the property at, so, um, 270 and across the street from where her business exists.
Are you the lady that had all the goats that came?
Yes, I am. I had, you know, my, my problems that I had. So...
I lost a calf during that time.
Yeah, well, I lost 26 at one, at two different episodes. So I have some concerns, you know.
You lost 26 at two different times?
26 on two different occasions, yeah.
Wow.
Right.
Oh, they killed eight or 10 at a time.
Yeah, they got 10 and they came back.
What happened?
There were dogs across.
Dogs.
Well, actually, where Ms. Ms. Greenwood's property is now, there was someone that had a tenterer. And they had dogs.
We're on a whole nother story, but that was interesting.
Pardon me?
I know we're getting off the subject, but that was kind of like, wow.
Yeah, it's in court. It was in court. It's all settled now.
Oh, good.
Yeah, it did, so... So my questions are just, uh, just the things that are, items that are online that say are required for this type of permit, are those accurate? Yeah, I mean...
We don't do that.
Uh, uh, because it says pictures of my property and, and, uh, you know, different stuff like that that's required before she could have her, her permits. Is that correct?
I don't, I don't know.
Am I looking at the wrong thing?
What, what, I guess I lost you there. What?
This is application for...
Mr. Devine is referring to...
Special exception.
To our process that we, that we typically engage in, where you guys look at the planning commission stage and this remains demonstration.
Yeah, we've already had our planning commission meeting. We did that.
You already done that? So you have everything you need from...
Your, your stuff really is just to see what properties are around, the subject property. It has nothing to do, just for us to have an idea. They don't live out there. So they get to see an idea of what looks like around.
Okay. I, I was just concerned because you probably remember, we had some problems even getting an address there
I remember.
a few years ago. Okay. So I didn't want there to be a surprise and find out there's a change in tax status.
No, no, no. Does not affect anything like your zoning.
Anything in the foreseeable future.
Right.
All the pictures are really to let us know what the surrounding properties look like.
Mm-hmm.
You know, just to see that it's conducive to us there.
As long as I'm not affected with my agricultural status and what I want to do.
You're not.
Thank you very much.
No, ma'am. Thank you.
So gentlemen, those would be the conditions that we would impose. The onsite refuse container, the determination of the real property avalorum, the personal property avalorum, doubling of the permit fee and, and securing a privileged license. Uh, those would be the conditions that we would place on your consideration. And so we'll close that public hearing. Mr. President, it'd be, it'd be appropriate to take action, and I would suggest that if the board is, is favorable to the request, that we adopt it with the conditions proposed.
Well, we need one more.
One more thing. Go ahead, Jay.
That, uh, so she was, no, you're good. But if you were to sell your property, the condition would go away.
Okay.
Or sell the business, the condition would go away.
We'd have to review.
Understood completely. And so what that, uh, that, what that condition means is that, uh, that the conditional use permit, if granted, will not be transferable unless the board supervisors, uh, thought authorizes that transfer.
What we're doing is we're looking at down the road. If you were to sell it and someone says, "Wow, this is a great place for me to put in a motorcycle repair shop." And some of your neighbors may not think it's such a good idea because motorcycles can be loud. So if you change ownership of that, that person would need to come in here to get approval for whatever business there you do it.
Right. Okay. So we'll add that fifth condition, uh, that Mr. Bishop has requested, and that's non-transferability of the permit without supervisor's authority. Okay? With that, Mr. President, it'd be appropriate to take action.
All right. Jared makes a motion?
Second.
Jay seconds. Any other discussion? I, I would like to say, Ms. Greenwood, you are some kind of entrepreneur. I'll tell you that. This is an internet business.
Yeah.
And they really repackage and then mail back out, and I think she's doing very well.
I believe.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Mr. President, the next item under my section is a, a public hearing on the Mississippi Storage LLC Conditional Per, Conditional Use Permit to expand the storage facility at 1633 Highway 469. This is calling for the construction of three new buildings. So we'll open that public hearing. Uh, it's a 2.16-acre parcel. It's owned C2. Uh, two buildings are pre, were previously approved by conditional use in 2019, but these, uh, extra two buildings were never built. There are two existing buildings on the property. If the conditional use is approved, there will be a total of five buildings. Uh, the buildings will match the existing buildings in color. Uh, the driveway and areas between the buildings are to be concrete. The screening is proposed as a six-foot-high fence along the west property line, and the exi, existing fence will be continued along the south property line. Uh, this, the ordinance requires a 40-foot front setback, and so the applicant is requesting a variance of 15 feet uh, to keep the buildings in line with existing buildings for design, traffic flow. And so the property was posted and notice of the public hearing was published, and we've not received, the OCD has not received any phone calls in response to that. So that public hearing is open. At this time, I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Mississippi Storage LLC Conditional Use Permit request. Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter?
That's right there for you, 460.
That's right there.
Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter unless the board has questions of the applicant. There is one condition that the staff is requesting, and that is that we must, uh, have Mr. Parker review a drainage plan and approve a drainage plan. And as of today, I don't think that that has yet been done. So that would be a condition to, uh, the issuance of the permit, that we get clearance on a drainage plan cleared through Mr. Parker.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Contingent that we get the drainage plan.
Okay.
I'll second.
Calhoun makes a motion. Mr. Morrison seconds that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Most passes. All right.
Gentlemen, uh, the next item under my section is, um, a hearing on the CenterPoint Energy Entities' Objection to Personal Property Tax Assessment for Tax Years 2017 to 2022. This is on the Gulf South Pipeline matter. As you guys know, we continue to work through, uh, a number of these situations where we've finally been provided information by Gulf South, and so we're just working, plugging away one at a time, trying to get these things handled. One of, or, or two of the customers of Gulf South are a public utility, CenterPoint, and they have a, a number of entities. One of those is called CenterPoint Energy Resources that we believe is based out of Texas, Houston, Texas. And then another one is called CenterPoint Louisiana. Uh, it's based out of, I think, Baton Rouge. And so they're both out-of-state entities, and they have filed what I'll call a cursory objection to the assessment that has been provided that was based on the data given to us by Gulf South concerning the volumes held by CenterPoint, these two CenterPoint ener, uh, energy entities. And so, uh, by virtue of the law, uh, they are afforded notice of the assessment that was provided, and they're given an opportunity to raise an objection. They have done so, and they have provided limited data. Uh, the Tax Assessor's Office has reviewed their response to the assessment as presented, and, uh, based on my conversation with the Tax Assessor's Office, they believe that the data provided by Gulf South is accurate and that the original assessment should be maintained. And so I, I have a public hearing scheduled for today to give CenterPoint Energy an opportunity to state to the board their objection to the assessment. So I'll call for anyone on behalf of CenterPoint Energy. Anyone? Mr. President, there's no one here on behalf of CenterPoint Energy to speak on the matter today. I would ask that we close that public hearing. At this time, I, I would request that the board, uh, adopt and, uh, certify the original assessment provided on behalf of the Tax Assessor using the Gulf South data for the CenterPoint Energy assessments. I just need a motion to approve the assessment as originally provided.
All right. Mr. Morrison makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Calhoun seconded the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Gentlemen, the next item under my section is a discussion of Mississippi Code and Tate's Section 19-11-27. This is a code section that is used and, and specifies the board's authority, uh, with respect to budget expenditures emanating out of or concern with the road department during the last three months of a supervisor term. And so this is just a quick reminder to you guys about those restrictions uh, and to give you some, um, some, some meat on the bone, so to speak, as we consider what are the limitations during these last three months, October, November, December, that, uh, that apply to how we utilize funds that have been budgeted for this fiscal year that are couched in terms of road department activities. That's a, it's a specific restriction. You're limited to 25% of the budgeted funds that, that relate to road department expenditures. I just want to go over that with you. And so the statute actually prohibits the board from expending from or contracting an obligation against the budget estimates for road and bridge construction, maintenance, and equipment during the last quarter of the term of office beginning October 1, a sum not exceeding one-fourth such, of such item of the budget. Uh, and so editorializing, this is what I told you guys, um, recently. In other words, the board cannot load expenditures during the last quarter of their term of office. You can't, you can't oversubscribe the budget for road and maintenance and, uh, equipment.
Give the next guy coming in something.
Exactly, exactly. So the legislature has put these, these restrictions, these barriers in place in order to protect the budget for over a period of time accounting for the end of a supervisor's term and the beginning of another term. And so the expenditures during the last quarter of the term of, of office must be limited to an amount equal to one-quarter of the budget. That's the limit. Equal to, you don't have to spend all of that, but you, you're limited. That's the max that can come out of that budget. So it's incumbent for us to stay legal, for us to stay out of hot water with the state auditor, uh, we, we have to watch those figures pretty carefully for this three-month period of time. It's, it's unlike any other periods of time, uh, that we deal with this, where the board has discretion and authority to act much more broadly than this. But in these last three months, there's some tight controls in place that we have to be careful about. And so we wanted to give you guys an opportunity to talk about that and also to help us, uh, to kind of get a game plan together. Uh, it's, it's helpful for you to kind of know, what, what exactly are those limitations? And so we've done some, kind of some quick math that helps us, and, and you'll be shocked, somewhat, I suspect, at just how limited we are in these last three months. Here's the issue. Many of the expenditures that relate to the road department are paid out annually. So we have insurance that is paid out on an annual basis, and those annual premium responsibilities are falling in large measure right here in this last term. And that's, that means for that particular item, that's 100% of that item expense to get that paid. So you, we are, to pay that, we are going to have to pay more than just 25% of that bill, right? We're going to pay the whole bill, but that's 100% of that particular charge. Our limitation is as to the budget as a whole and not just for those items, but there will be items that we expend on an annual basis that are going to eat into that amount that's available to us to spend just by virtue of the way that, that the accounting has to be handled. So what are some rules of thumb for you as we look forward? We're going to continue to pay employees. They're going to be paid. We're going to continue to make notes on equipment that are outstanding. That's going to continue to be paid. So there are going to be a number of expenses. Really what we're talking about is additional kinds of projects that apply across the supervisor districts. What are the limitations there? It's not stuff that's necessarily budgeted from a project standpoint. It's on top of what's already budgeted. What are, what are those things that we need to be careful about? So to keep us square, we think that what, what we're looking at here is somewhere in the neighborhood of a total of about 800 grand. A total countywide is, would, would allow us to stay between the digits. That'll keep us out of trouble. What that amounts to is across supervisor districts, 175-ish per district is what you're looking at. That's what we're up against. And so my suggestion would be, as we, as we look forward in the next three months, what we need to kind of be thinking about is what is work? What is, what is the kind of work that we can account for and still stay legal?
Sir, do you bring this up? Because I want to bring and put a red light on Spillway Road.
No, sir. We did not. Uh, we, we didn't bring this up for anything in particular, other than as a reminder. We, this is the first opportunity that we've had, uh, really to address it. Uh, and it's, it's October, and so it needs to be addressed. There's, there's also this that's standing out there. It's, it's how we've done things in the past. And, uh, one of the ways, and I'm going to let Mike speak. I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm just going off of what I understand. What has happened in the past is that what we have generally done to stay compliant is to do prep work for the work that we know we're going to start in the next quarter, where it's safe to do so. The prep work becomes kind of the limiting factor on expenditures. We can stay within that 25% number, the limitation, by getting ourselves ready for other work that's coming down the pike. And so if Mike is allowed to do the prep work instead of focusing on specific projects, we feel like we can stay where we need to stay. But if we're going to add projects into this three-month timeframe, it's going to limit the ability to do the prep work for projects that are coming down the pike. Did I state that pretty well?
I mean, Mr. Schley, if we had like a tornado outbreak or something that's coming in our road crews, and I mean, we go over that 800,000, I mean, I mean, will we be okay if we had to go over that 800?
This, this limitation is always going to submit to an emergency declaration that the board would declare. If we have a bad weather event between now and December 31, you guys are likely going to declare an emergency, and this code section is simply not going to apply.
I got to probably help that. I know, I mean...
Well, it's, I mean, is this something that we, we're not going to make a decision because it's guidelines that we have to... We just have to recognize that we have to stay within those parameters.
He just makes them for water.
What can, what, what can be helpful is the, is the, um, kind of the, the temperature of the board as it relates to focusing on prep work or looking at specific projects. If the board feels strongly one way or the other, let's stick with how we've done it in the past and just go with that. Or no, on this occasion, in, at this point, we are comfortable with looking at specific projects during this three-month term, understanding that there's a limitation on how large that project can be in full. All right. So I, we just need a little bit of direction from you guys. What do y'all prefer? Do you prefer that Mike focus on prep work? Or should we be open to individual projects? And if so, do we understand that that's going to probably be about... And if so, do we understand that that's going to probably be about 175 grand?
I think continued prep work and I mean, I don't.
If there's an emergency, let's face it, when it comes, to me, continue our prep. I don't know how much the red light that Jay's talking about costs.
It's probably going to be more than 150,000.
Well, let's see how things are working because one of us may not need the whole 175.
We can wait till after January.
Okay. I'm good with doing it the way that you have explained that we've done it in the past. And if we have something that comes before us, we'll handle it one at a time.
Okay. So what I would suggest, gentlemen, just so it's clear to your staff, to all of us, Mike will move forward with prep work. If any supervisor has a project that can fit within that 175 number and they want to bring that forward, the board can address that and approve it and that will be, that's how we'll handle that. Is everybody comfortable with that arrangement?
I think that's where it ought to be.
That keeps.
Could be something changed.
That keeps Mike from having to guess.
All right.
Gentlemen, I have executive session. I see Mr. Jones here. We have an executive session.
Mr. Hicks, would you rather stay where you're at?
Yes, sir.
Than stand up here in front with those guys?
I'm comfortable.
Okay, okay. I'll just give you that.
So wait a minute, you get up when he's not here, but he's here, you sit down.
Item A under my section is the Neely Creek Ditch Flood Impact Project, which is an ARPA project. It's approval of pay app number one to impede construction, the amount of 267,191 dollars and 29 cents and authority to issue that check.
I'm making a motion for.
Say it. All right. Calhoun makes a motion. Mr. Morrison seconds. Any other discussion? I have a question. Is this money coming from the ARPA monies? Some of the money that Craig was talking about?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right, all in favor? Motion passes.
That's Highway eighty. Yeah. Just so y'all know, that Neely Creek doesn't make a lot of sense, but.
Definitely not.
It looks more like a ditch.
Trying to improve their drainage.
That's what that is.
Okay.
Good project.
Yep, supposed to alleviate the flooding, is that correct?
Supposed to help, yeah.
All right.
Item B is authority to issue checks for the annual 2023 tax levy allocation to our volunteer fire departments in Rankin County contingent upon receipt of the financials and run reports from each department.
All right. You have a motion.
Say it.
Jay Bishop makes a motion to approve. Jared makes second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion approved.
And finishing up last fiscal year, we're asking for approval of the amended budget for fiscal year 23.
All right.
Most approved.
Jay Bishop makes a motion. Mr. Morrison seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Any additional business?
No, he had one that you wanted.
Yes, sir. On the item we pulled off the consent agenda, which is a request for approval of a MOU, all we ask is that we amend that item to make the approval contingent upon staff review of the actual MOU. We have a summary of the MOU, but not the actual document. We'd like to look at that before we move forward with it.
Most approved, contingent upon staff approval.
Second.
All right, Jay Bishop makes a motion. Calhoun seconds. Any other discussion? All in, wait, did I need to add that? Do we need a motion to add it?
No, sir. It was on consent. We just put it in.
Okay, all in favor? Motion passes. Any other additional business to be discussed? I have one. And this is not something for approval, it's just discussion. We have a lot of the population in Rankin County is either at the reservoir area or the Brandon Pearl corridor. We have baseball, football, things like that that draws a lot of people and crowd and they're also prone to accidents when they're playing ball. I would like to consider and just throw it out there, I've talked to Mike and some others about having a rest station for ambulance service, for the ambulance personnel to be able to set up on our property on Marquette. We've got really an area already there that has showers, an office, just if they need to go take a shower, if they've got a break, they can do it there. And this would be around that multipurpose. I don't know how we would do them, because at times there's big crowds, that's the multipurpose. We're going to have to figure out if we do it, how they could stage their ambulances and respond from there. And it's just something to look at down the road. I'd like everybody to just think about it. It might help us get another ambulance in the county if we did have a station that's provided and we're not, I'm not saying spend a quarter of a million dollars building it. I'm thinking a budget of 50,000 to maybe move a wall or to do something in space we already have. Let's, if we would just put it on our minds and think about it.
I thought they set up at the ball field or something out anyway.
They can't be at every game.
Yeah.
They may not even be able to be at that staging point.
They don't have, they don't have, I'm talking about.
I know Brandon's got a staging place right here, close by, I mean downtown of Brandon, but I mean.
Can they take a shower there and sit down?
Do you know where, or do you know where the Patrick Stages at now in Brandon? They have like showers and restroom and?
I know they have a restroom because as a matter of fact, Saturday I saw one of our supervisors in Hondo was putting in a dishwasher and was getting some parts to repair a toilet.
I don't know.
Where is this at?
Behind mud bugs.
What's your specific place? Now I didn't answer in just a second.
Do they have a shower accommodations to stage there during the day? Or would it be better to stage on Marquette where we have some facilities where they could stay?
Okay.
And are the units that are staging there, are they also amenable to county response?
I have one, I know for a fact.
All right, okay.
I'll get you some answers in just a second.
All right, well, hey, we can talk about this, this is just for discussion. Is there any other additional business?
I did, y'all know, last board meeting, I asked y'all permission to let Tim go out and look at Richland Creek drainage issue we got. And I think Tim or Mike, one has been out there and I'd like to just get a report and let, get some feedback on what was found. This NRCS is going to fund this, I mean, but we had to kind of get a ballpark figure on what it was going to cost.
So. Rough ballpark estimate, Brad, probably two.
State your name. State your name and address.
We want to see your new shoes.
Mike and I did go and look at it and we're looking at estimating roughly $25,000 to make that repair.
And you feel like that NRCS will fund it?
I haven't spoken directly to them, but it certainly looks like something, I mean, it's on the Richland Creek deal, so I mean, it seems to me it would be a legitimate use for it.
Well, I'm thinking that NRCS went out and looked at it and they seen one drainage issue a pipe, but not far from that pipe is another pipe that they didn't have, they don't know that is rusted out completely. That's got to be replaced. So I mean, that's something that.
Right.
I don't know if it'd be Craig, I mean, what do you think, get NRCS back and go, if they got any questions?
So let me remind the board, this was not something that the county went out and was looking for. This came to us through NRCS. And the whole basis of it was that they have some funding available that they don't normally have available to them. And so they saw an opportunity to, in essence, to couple with the county here, come together with the county and cooperate on a project that falls within the Richland Creek Drainage District boundary and they are legally authorized to expend funds on, but they don't have a road department in NRCS and they don't have equipment. And so this is not something that they themselves can handle efficiently. So they needed to come to us and ask for cooperation to do it. We're willing to do that, but the understanding is we expect them to pay for it, right? So you guys said, let's send Tim out and let's make sure we know what we're about to get into here. Because it's typical federal government, it's how it works is they cooperate with us, we go do the work, we send them proof that we took care of it financially and then we wait for them to reimburse us. So what we don't want to do is to go spend a pile of money only to be told later, well, we thought we had enough, but we didn't. So there's some level here of coordination and what Tim's just told you guys, I think, without telling you straight up, is that when we went out there to review, we found what appears to be more needed repair work than what NRCS thought there was. So we need to go back to NRCS now and say, what if we told you that instead of just replacing one pipe, it's going to be two? Do you have enough money to do it? So we need some direction there. I want us to spend only the amount of money that we are reasonably confident we can get reimbursed. So 25,000, we think, is a good estimate that can get us completed. Now we need to know, can NRCS cover that?
And I'm not saying that the county's going to do the work. I'm saying we need a contractor, maybe.
Well, the cost is probably going to be a lot more if we get a contractor to do it.
Well, I think we're maybe can provide some of the rip rafting.
I like something.
Well, we got 25,000. Let's just stay within that and see what the best way to handle it legally.
It must be pretty small for 25,000.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a lot there. I mean, we haven't really drilled down into any details yet, so we can, I mean, we can obviously refine that, you know, whatever algorithm.
I mean, it's two-foot gavaniased pipes, it's probably a 90-foot total.
This is infrastructure that's probably installed 40 years ago.
It's all rusted out.
Wow, didn't last very long.
All right.
Didn't last very long.
Forty years.
You said 40 years ago?
Forty.
Oh, I thought you said four.
Forty.
Man, this has some acid running through that thing.
No, sir. We think 40 years.
Yeah. Well, yeah, it's made its life.
Keep working and get with NRCS and let's see what we can do. All right, any other additional business? I do want to say for people, almost every board meeting that we have now, stormwater comes up and there's a lot of reasons, but one reason is because the population's growing. There's more houses. There you, before this board, much before, there wasn't a lot of planning. I mean, it's obvious that we can drive by subdivisions and see that their rooftop is lower than the road and water goes downhill. That's easy. We don't, we try not to let that happen anymore. In my district, District Four, I have not approved a high-density subdivision in the county like reservoir east. And we have a lot of complaints about things and it's because, a lot of that is because of the high density. A lot more vehicles, a lot more people. It wasn't planned very well for the drainage when it was put in. So I look at larger lots that we do have a flood plan before we approve. This area on Holly Bush really would be more, would be serviced much better if it was in an incorporated area. It's like a city, but you don't get the city amenities. And I know there's several law enforcement people that live there. With the limited amount of resources that the county has to cover about 1,000 miles of roads, properties, it's hard to dedicate officers in one area because they get calls and they're going all over the county. Please don't think that we and the sheriff are not sensitive. We are. And we're working together with the sheriff on some other ways of trying to take care of patrol-type issues. So don't leave here thinking that we're not doing anything. I know we can't redo your subdivision. I'm talking about replant it and it's there. We can keep a sensitive eye where it's at when we, like here, when we find homes that are not being maintained, we'll take them, we'll take, they do have a legal process they have to go through. It's not a quick process. We are doing it. We are trying to keep our roads in good shape. Just keep in mind, I'm not letting things come in that's upstream or downstream from y'all that will affect you more with water discharge. That's all I got to say. Yes, ma'am?
Speaking of the flooding and stuff, say it did happen and it's because of a private property.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there an easy way to find out who owns that property so, so like our insurance companies aren't footing the bill?
Yes.
When it's obviously a private property is not maintaining their area.
The best way to find out who owns that property is to go to the Chantry Clark's office. They can look at it and probably within a few minutes tell you who owns that property because somebody's paying taxes on it.
Yeah.
I know this might be a little hard to do, but the county website's got a place where you can put parcel, land owner, and it'll block off what property they own and click on it, it'll tell you who it is. Now, it's not going to give you a telephone number, I mean, but it'll give you like a PIN number.
Okay. Thank you. I know it's highly unlikely for where I live, it seems like we're in an okay area and we did, I did buy flood insurance just in case.
Good, good.
But just thinking like people in the back of the neighborhood who might be prone to it.
It is, there are.
Just wondering about that.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, any more additional business to be discussed?
Gentlemen, your consideration for executive session is going to be for sure litigation, pending litigation. I'm not sure what other bases would be.
Make a motion, need to go into executive session.
This will be to discuss anticipated and pending litigation.
All right.
I'll second the motion.
Jared makes a motion. Calhoun seconds. To go into executive session for litigation purposes. All in favor? Okay, we are in executive service. Let's make, all right, who's got that motion?
I made the motion.
Brad makes a motion.
Second.
Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Executive session, bathroom.